Hello.
Hello.
Oh shit, I'm so sorry.
No, I, why do you think?
Nancy, look what you did. Look how fucked up.
Oh my god.
I didn't know. Why do you think I would joke about that?
Can y'all, gossipy little birds, keep it down? Thank you. Alright, uh, welcome everyone. Uh, this is another series of town halls we will be holding. Um, there are a number of things to talk about. We'll get through them as fast as we can. Uh, the judges and DOJ have some things we want to discuss and bring your attention, as well as, uh, the mayor's office has some things they want to announce. Once we get through those announcements, we will then be able to open up a general question and answer period. I appreciate y'all's patience and understanding. There's a lot to get through. Uh, please try to keep it down in the gallery while we're going over these things so that everyone has a chance to absorb the information. Alright, so, uh, from the DOJ, there's a couple of things, uh, to announce quickly. Number one, uh, Justice Allison Thomas and Judge Coyote have both, uh, retired as of the last elections. Uh, the year where two new judges elected in their stead. Um, I myself was re-elected to another six-month term. Uh, Judge Larry Hallow, a former district attorney, was elected to one of the judge seats who will have a six-month term, uh, as well as Judge Norman Adams, who is over to my left, uh, was elected to a six-month term.
Hell yeah, dick's out for Crane.
Thank you. So, uh, what this means is that there will be, uh, several new faces around. So if you're going through bench trials or anything, um, you will interface with these folks. Please give them the utmost respect as you would me. Um, and if, you know, you have any questions, comments, concerns about myself or anyone else in the DOJ, please feel free to bring those forward. And, uh, if it's about me directly, I will respect your request and forward it to the senate or another judge. Okay, um, so legislation, couple of things. I think there was an announcement made recently that everyone should be aware of. I don't know if y'all are, but I'll make you aware now. Um, we have a treason law. So treason, uh, is currently defined as follows. Whoever engages in and/or incites others to participate in rebellion or insurrection against the authority of the state of San Andreas. The authority of the state of San Andreas shall be considered for the purposes of this statute to include the senate and/or the laws of the state. This shall include anyone who attempts to secede from the state by way of sovereign land claims or annexation. So what does this mean for all of you? Absolutely nothing. However, like any other charge, okay, there can be accomplices to treason. There can be accessories to treason. So if let's say you, you know, gain the understanding that someone has set up a separatist commune in, I don't know, let's pick a random location, Mirror Park, and has decided that they no longer are subject to the laws of the state and they openly flaunt those laws and state as much publicly, uh, I would not suggest that you give them aid by bringing them food or supplies. By the way, uh, as I spoke about the two new judges, the one to my left, Norman Adams, this is Mr. Hallow right here who just walked in.
Hey, what's up everybody? Sorry I'm late.
So, uh, treason is a law. It is a held until trial charge. Yes, held until trial, actual held until trial. Uh, we'll take questions, uh, at, at the end of this, uh, Ms. Lichtenberg. Um, now, uh, when it comes to, you know, interfacing with groups that are taking these actions, I'll just put it very bluntly. Open up a history book, look how it went for the South in the Civil War. Uh, last time I checked, they have not risen again, so let's be careful about who we choose to align ourselves with. Now, uh, that is treason. Uh, in terms of terrorism, this was a hot button topic due to something affectionately known as mag dump season or hell week or any other uh, variety of terms that were given to it. We in the DOJ are not comfortable with the idea of using terrorism as a Band-Aid for the poor actions of frustrated citizens. As a result, here's how things are going to work moving forward. This is not in the books yet, but it is our judicial guidance that we will be working with the senate to implement. I'm affectionately calling it diet terrorism, but you know, we'll get a good name for it. Uh, here's the idea. If you randomly, uh, rock up to a traffic stop and throw a grenade at a cop car, uh, that is not terrorism because there is no, you know, stated manifest intent and it is nearly impossible for an officer to discover that stated manifest intent. However, here's what it is. And I will come up with the name for this properly at some point. You know, it might be called like disruption of police powers or domestic terrorism or something to that effect. But the idea-
Riot is taking.
Riot, riot is taken. We do have that.
Already have a riot charge.
So, uh, here's, here, okay, so me saying I had, don't have the name yet was not an invitation, although I do appreciate that guys. So here's kind of the language that we would be looking at. Wanton violence against police forces without independent motive or circumstances. Independent motive or circumstances would include partaking in an underlying felonious intent in which the violence might be construed as a means to escape. So, reading between the lines, that means if you're running from robbing the vault and you throw a grenade at the cops to get away, that's not diet terrorism. That's not normal terrorism. That's just throwing a grenade at cops trying to get away from the vault. So you would be charged accordingly. If you randomly throw a grenade at a traffic stop because you quote unquote hate cops and want them to quote unquote go 42 pussy, then you'll get diet terrorism. Here's what diet terrorism will feel like. You will get somewhere, as it has not been determined yet, between a hundred eighty and two hundred and forty months. You will get a charge of somewhere between twelve and fifteen thousand dollars. The point of this is that it should reflect the severity of the action and the disrupting nature it has to the fabric of our society without causing the stress on everyone of trying to figure out if you're actually a terrorist with a political motivation. So you'll go to Bullenbrook, you'll think about what you did and hopefully it'll deter you from doing it again. If it doesn't, that charge will continue to exist. And here's the final kicker. This has not been determined yet. They're still in discussion, but we are considering making it much like drug trafficking and felony possession intent to distribute. If you are convicted of diet terrorism, let's say three times in a very short period of time, TBD, then you may qualify for terrorism and may be held. So there will be a quote unquote fuck around and find out provision to this law. So that's the middle ground we're working on right now. I want to give everyone the idea and we can talk about that during the open Q and A if you have any questions, comments, concerns. Uh, next. We are looking in the DOJ at marriage. This is a hot button topic that has come up regarding when is my marriage recognized, when it is not. As of right now, we only recognize legal marriage when it is through a contract that both parties sign. Would you not recognize ceremonial or religious marriage as a way to enforce anything in this jurisdiction? That is being discussed and is worked on and we are open to suggestion, but that is the way it is currently. Uh, finally, um, we are doing an overhaul review or a wholesale review of the legislative entries in the MDW. We are working to ensure that everything in this city is in the MDW and is able to be accessed by the public. So there will be no more referencing government websites or anything of that nature when it comes to getting information. You should be able to go down to the public city hall access point and get every piece of information you need. One of those things that's being reviewed is the constitution due to the fact that some of the changes to drug trafficking and other charges directly contradict the provisions in the constitution such as the thirty day statute of limitations and all those sorts of things. Those are all going to be fleshed out, updated with the consent of the senate. Uh, finally, we are working on a, uh, parole charge or a parole legislation to explain how this works. For that, I will kick it over to Mr. Hallow here who will discuss the, uh, updated parole legislation.
Yeah, so essentially, uh, in the past, it seems that there's been quite a bit of confusion, uh, of how the parole system actually works. Um, some people seem to believe that it's, uh, for example, if you are sentenced for drug trafficking to three years in prison and five years parole, that if you serve three years of your parole and you are arrested, you have to go and serve your entire five years of parole that you are allotted when you are convicted. That is not how it works. If you are sent in for five or three years in prison, you serve your time and you go out and you commit a crime after three years of parole, you will only serve the remainder of your parole in prison. So you only serve that two years. It is being specified and then we are making it very, uh, how do I put this? We're laying it out very specifically to make sure nobody gets confused by this because, uh, apparently a couple of people are wanting to go to the court docket about it, but uh, that'll be coming up in the legislation here, I believe, right after this town hall meeting, actually, uh-
Correct.
About it. Um, if you have any questions, please feel free to come ask me. I have no problem explaining it more in detail. But, uh, with this new legislation, it should be pretty easy to understand throughout everything.
Alright, Mr. Adams, you got anything you want to bring forth?
Uh, I'm willing to field any questions with regards to the, uh, to the diet terrorism as they may come across. Um, you've pretty much covered what I had on that.
Okay, alright, so that's it from the DOJ. Thank you for your patience. We'll kick it over to the mayor's office. They'll go through their announcements and topics. And then we will all proceed to the open question and answer. And yes, we are going to talk about the whole key holder issue at the open question and answer. I'm just not going to bring it up now because it's a very big topic that is going to take up a lot of time. So, uh, Ms. Gain and her deputies, uh, I'll throw it over to you. Thank you.
Actually, good. You good?
Yeah, I guess you're good.
Yeah.
Your, uh, your face needs a touch up there.
Is that better?
Alrighty.
I think there's might be too many people here.
Yeah, probably.
Uh, right, so we're going to talk about a few things that we have actually done during this administration. Um, something that is actually implemented today, we are increasing government pays again. Uh, we are doing an increase around all specters, either a twenty to ten percent as well as what we done, uh, previous to help, uh, basically with the income coming in for, you know, government employees. We changed some of the taxes. We, uh, changed property tax by one percent. And we actually increased it by one percent and we decreased services and good by one percent. So it's actually costs less money to buy food now, but, uh, you get more money back when you're in a, you know, when you're buying a house. Um, we try for our administration to keep the twenty-four hour approval or denial for a businesses. We try to make sure that everybody has a chance to come up and put their businesses in and at least get a fast response so they know if they actually need to, any adjustments or what they need to do for their next steps. Uh, because of this, we've actually approved over a hundred and five businesses during my administration and denied forty of them. Forty-two exactly. So we are very good about trying to make sure people can start small businesses as well as try new things. Um, another great update is when I started this administration, we had forty-four million in the state account and thirty-four million of bills owed to us. Starting today, we have sixty-nine million, uh, in the state account. So I've actually, uh, was able to get money into the state account as well as increase money for everybody else. Um, that's pretty much all the update that I've had. Uh, my administration does end in a technical week and then voting will start again for, uh, voting. There is three applicants up right now, so Maximilian Delicious, Kevin Ram, as well as myself. You guys are free to vote for whoever you feel is comfortable, but whoever does join, um, I'm just going to say this, my deputy mayors are going to be trained how to be a mayor if I do become mayor. So I'm going to continue on training people so more people get experience and know exactly what to do so we can keep the budgets going. So, just a heads up. Alright. That's it.
Wait, is there any vote coming up?
Yes, it's coming up soon. Uh, deputies, anything specifically you want to bring forward?
Uh, yeah, I got-
No, deputy mayors.
No, I'm pretty good. If you guys are happy to start with the next topic.
Alright, okay, um, so I will tentatively say we will start moving forward into the general question, answer, comment session. Here's how this is going to work. I'm going to moderate this. I'm going to call on people. If a topic is brought up that you also have commentary on, um, we'll, we'll get to you during the same section. And once we feel like we've kind of circled back on a topic a few times, uh, we'll try to move on because I think we need to create some like action items here instead of just, you know, talking in circles. So, uh, we'll go ahead first with, I believe, is that Ms. Kira Cruz with her hand up?
Yes, sir.
Oh, can I step up and shout?
Yes, just step up, uh, to the lectern here. Sort of in a center area and then shout, please.
Alright, so, uh, I heard your comment about, you know, marriages and everything. Um, so, um, no, I don't know under Los Santos law that I'm, you know, technically married. But, you know, I married my husband, Lenny Lodge, uh, back, uh, almost a year ago. Unfortunately, he's been ICU for a couple of months. Does that mean like, you know, that, uh, you know, under the state of, uh, San Andreas that I'll, I'm not married to him? And like, what can I do about that if he's just, you know, stuck in ICU like a potato?
So legally, uh, we do not currently recognize, and, and I, and I'm going to make this very clear for everyone's benefit, just so we're clear. We do not legally recognize wills or, uh, you know, bequeathments or anything of that nature in this jurisdiction. If, uh, someone passes away, the state will seize their assets, auction them off, et cetera, do what they will with them. This is not a jurisdiction where we will entertain, uh, living wills and such. Um, for reasons I'm just not even getting into, that's just the way it is. Uh, in terms of marriage and, uh, marital rights, so protections such as not having to testify against each other, uh, protections like tax breaks and things like that, we do not have anything legally on the books that offers those protections based on marriage. Um, now, what I have advocated since I was an attorney and there may be even some people in this room such as Ms. Lichtenberg who can vouch for this, is that, uh, you should, if you're going to get married, you're welcome to do so for your own peace of mind, happiness, wanting to spread your love to others in a public ceremony, that does not make it a legally binding contract. If you want to contract with each other, you may do so just like any other citizens. You can hire a lawyer, you can write up binding terms and then in the future, if someone violates those terms, you can sue them for breach just like you would with any other contract. The reason why we are not going to get into the idea of recognizing, uh, marriage in terms of a legal sense in this jurisdiction, well, it is just, uh, the nature of where we live here that it is true that people tend to have family bushes more than trees, uh, as well as the fact that we don't have any specific regulations about polygamy. Uh, it is very difficult to sort of vet these marriages and there's just a whole host of problems that could arise if we were to just wholesale recognize legal marriage uh, from anyone's point of view. So if you'd like to enter into a binding legal agreement as an adult with another adult, uh, God bless you. That is your right as an American under general contract law. If you'd like the state to show how much the state loves you and your marriage for religious or ceremonial purposes, uh, you're barking up the wrong tree. The state is not your friend. That'd be my point of view.
Okay, so I've, uh, got to wait for him to, you know, get out the ICU for, you know, to make it legal.
Uh, if you don't have a pre-existing contract to rely on, it would be very difficult for the state to adjudicate that situation.
Okay.
But I would recommend as always to get legal advice.
I, I kinda wanna- Thank you, sir.
Yes, if she had a contract stating she was his legal guardian in case of his incapacitation, then potentially. Uh, yes, Ms. Lichtenberg?
Um, sorry. Okay, um, regarding the law on, uh, sedition activity and treason and everything like that, um, I did ask Sheriff Kyle Pratt on this, but I want a clarification from the DOJ to ensure this. Um, uh, press neutrality is still in place for this. Uh, for instance, if, um, if there was, uh, Mirror Park went seditious and claimed their own area for whatever reason and press wanted to speak with individuals within to tell the story, um, would that fall under the, uh, accomplice accessory or treason charges or is press neutrality applicable there?
As long as you are not encouraging within your coverage other people to partake in criminal actions such as treason or sedition, then you would be fine. If you were just documenting, that's fine. However, if let's say you decide you're going to bring in a gift basket of chocolates and farming supplies to the seditious enclave, then that would be a problem. So that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed.
Mm-hmm. Alright, uh, Mr. Gore, go ahead.
Fantastic.
Oh no.
I have several bills that I'd like to propose today.
Oh, fuck. Oh, hell yeah.
Uh, okay.
I would like to pass a law, this is all regarding to law B thirty-seven through D forty-eight. If you wish to have these documents emailed to you after the presentation, they're about three hundred and seventy-two pages long. God bless you if you want to read through all-
I love reading. I'll take those. Thank you.
I'll read it. I'll, I'll take it.
Basically, the summarize starts, starts as this. If you cough on someone in public, you get the death penalty. All civil court cases must be decided by a game of mini golf between the plaintiff and the defendant. Anyone caught using Miracle Whip will be put in maximum security prison for a minimum of twenty years. We're going to make it legal to keep a kangaroo as a pet. Make it legal to have sex with your sister, but only if she's hot. Anyone caught buying bread, butter and pickles loses their right to vote.
Thank you for the tier one six months to advance.
Mondays have now become illegal and they will be simply called Sunday Part Two.
Yeah.
And all juries must contain a mountain lion. Now this leads me to the next step in the process. Bear witness with me. Furious Seven, the synopsis. Dominic and his crew thought they'd left the criminal mercenary life behind. They defeated international terrorist Owen Shaw and went their separate ways. But now Shaw's brother, Deckard Shaw, is out killing the crew by one for revenge. Worse, a Somali terrorist called Jakar Day and a shady government official called Mr. Nobody-
Yeah, this is the Patton Oswalt bit from Parks and Rec.
I'm waiting for the Boba Fett part to come up. Hang on.
Any technological device into a weapon. Toretto must reconview and with his team to stop Shaw and retrieve the guy's side program. While caught in a power struggle between terrorists and the United States government. Page two.
When I get bored.
They say-
Hey, hey, respect the podium.
To glimpse the future, just look behind you. I used to think that was bullocks, but now I realize you can't outrun the past. When we were kids, you'd start fights with the toughest bastards in the yard. But I was the one who had to step in and finish him. Rest now, little brother, while I settle yours. One last score.
What is, okay, sir.
You take care of my brother. Anything happens to him, I'll come by looking through. Here, hold this. Next page.
Flip the page, Aaron, flip the page.
He's reading movie plots. Kick him out.
Come on.
Hey, respect the podium, Jaeger.
Where are you taking me? They say an open road helps you think about where you've been, where you're going. So you don't remember any of this yet? That's not fair.
Do we have a two-thirds?
You know I do. So what is it exactly then? You're trying to show me that we used to come here, come here. We invented it. Keep it under nine thousand RPMs. Kid's gonna fry his pistons after the first two hundred. You know, that's not my style. I gotta ride or die, right? How about you just ride on this one? Are you ready? I know you're ready.
Speaker has thirty seconds left in their five-minute allocation.
Nice job. Hey, that's the girl I heard so much about. Page three.
We're only on page three.
Where you been at? Ghost girl, ghost grandmother, Letty, what the hell, huh?
Fifteen seconds.
Damn dog, girls still got that swing, homie. You never could take a punch. Right, right. Hey, man.
Alright, Mr. Gore, thank you for your time as a-
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate it.
Mr. Gore, your time is up. Please make your way out.
Alright, we made it, Jack. Yeah, we made it. Yeah, we made it. Now I just gotta find that door button. Buddy, where's the door?
Uh, it's someone at escorting us.
You go.
Here's my knife.
Hi.
Hey.
Come on, come on, Mr. Gore. Come on.
Yeah, this. Page five now.
Sir.
Come on, Mr. Gore.
Thank you very much.
That's my- Oh, no.
Alright, okay, everyone, everyone, listen. Everyone needs to take a cough drop and please, if you're not the person speaking, don't speak because things are going to get really thick in the air in here. God knows if you're wearing a Gucci belt, they're already thick. Am I right, Ms. Cox?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Alright, like I said, okay, Mr. Demon Blood, go ahead.
He got away from me. He got away from me.
Yes. Tell us the ending. Page, page seven. I guess now the joke's on me. Where are you reading? What are you doing?
I get it, Randy.
That's the date that I lost my, oh, memory. I've, I've tried, oh.
Your honor, we motion to have Jaeger execute him with a buck.
Look at it. It's the truth.
Okay.
That's the date that I lost my memory. That's the date that Letty died.
Cleo, cuff him and leave him somewhere in the wilderness.
No, you never died. So you know how hard it is. You cannot filibuster my, I will filibuster these laws. We should be able to have sex with our sisters if they're hot.
You know, uh, as crazy as that man is, I actually was in favor of like eighty percent of the stuff he said before the whole furious thing. If, if you, if you use miracle- Uh, the first one I didn't like. If you use Miracle Whip, you, you are an asshole. Alright, uh, go ahead, Mr. Demon Blood.
Is this the part where we ask questions?
Uh, it is. Go ahead.
Yes.
What is the fine for diet terrorism?
The diet terrorism fine is being, uh, considered to be anywhere between twelve and eighteen thousand dollars.
And what is the terrorism fine?
Uh, that is an open-ended fine that could go anywhere up to, I mean, what's, what's a held until trial fine that I've heard of? It's recently, they've been-
Eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, they've recently been anywhere between like fifty to like a million dollars.
And what is the treason fine?
Uh, that is an open-ended charge. So if you go in the MDW, Mr. Jaeger, uh, outside there, uh, at the public access terminal, uh, this is for everyone's benefit. You'll notice that, uh, misdemeanors are the ones in green. The ones that are in that kind of cyan orange color, those are going to be, uh, felonies. And the ones that are in red, those are the held until trials. Now there are some things that are not held until trial that are also red, like witness tampering. Uh, those are all judicial discretion in terms of sentencing, so it is open-ended and uncapped.
Thank you so much, your majesty.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
No, sir.
Alright, thank y'all.
It's only eighteen days.
Only eighteen days.
Alright, uh, Mr. Glory, I believe that is you.
Oh.
The air and the cosmetics are a little thick in here, so.
Thank you.
Making an assumption based on your have-is vest.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Crane. Hello, Deputy Glory. I just want to clarify, uh, that the mayor's office has to follow the rules of the road. They can't drive on the wrong side of the road, even for a tiny bit.
Nope. Yes, nobody in here is above the law.
Oh, is?
Nope, nope.
Yep, nobody is.
I thought cyan was orange. Okay, I'm like crazy. I thought cyan was like a burnt orange color. I forgot cyan's blue. What is, what do you call that burnt orange color? It has like a specific, specific name.
Follow the rules of the road.
What's the name of that color? Yeah, no, I, I didn't realize.
You want to break the law?
Sienna, that's what I was thinking of. Sienna, sienna. Yeah, sienna, that's what it was. No, it was sienna.
He's holding our budget hostage so she can break the law.
Cyan is blue-green, sienna is like the orange or whatever.
I have not one parking ticket.
That makes a lot more sense.
I made sure that we all got a nice raise.
Oh my god, Wrangler, please stop.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yeah, cyan or-
Hang on, Wrangler, clarify, clarify. What happened?
Wrangler, can you stand up?
Stop, step forward. Hit the gavel, hit the gavel. I swear to god.
I'm hitting the gavel.
Okay, look.
Okay.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this once and I'm gonna say this to members of the mayor's staff as well as the judges, as well as everyone else. Please, let's not shout and, and get derailed. This will go on forever. Okay, Wrangler, yes, speak. Sepia or, or sienna, yeah. I don't know why I said cyan. I, I always think that cyan is yellow for like orange reasons.
Hello, everyone. I'm Randy Wrangler and I just want to say, hopefully, you're not considering making a lull against having two hundred orgasms in five minutes or else the mayor would be found guilty.
What?
Can we hit the gavel?
Alright, uh, no, 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 no. Thank you. Okay, thank you all. Okay, let's move on to the next person here. Uh, the gentleman who is waving at me in the black hoodie with the white decals on it, he may come up here.
Hello, your honor. Hello, mayor. I'm, uh, I want to talk about maintenance fees. Now, I don't have a problem with maintenance fees, but like any taxes, I would like to know what I'm paying. And as of right now, most of the citizens here are in the dark. We just get a final fee and don't know what is for what. What are we going to, you know, and I want to know if something could be done about that where maybe we can see each individual thing that pay like four.
Uh, yeah, go ahead. Yep.
Um, I actually have somebody from PDM, actually, uh, he was calling people and code-calling and, uh, he was figuring out cars people own and asking them how much they're-
Um, I actually have somebody from PDM, actually, uh, he was calling people and code calling and, uh, he was figuring out cars people own and asking them how much they're paying for asset fees so he could try to figure it out himself. Um, I can see what we can do, uh, to about getting it itemized so you guys know which vehicles are for what vehicles maybe. Um, we can try to work towards that, but it's something that we cannot control as a federal thing, so I can see what we can do, though.
If you can get it itemized, I know what I'm paying, cause it's like any taxes, you wanna know what, what's going where, you know?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree completely.
I don't disagree with you, uh, I will say that that is probably not the highest priority in terms of the, uh, architect's time, however, it is something that I can inquire about, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, sir, uh, Nancy, go ahead.
Good evening, your highness.
Thank you, hi Nancy.
Liquid Geico, thank you for the, uh, prime.
Um, let me, uh, get my notepad out here as I, Paul Gore voter. I am going to discuss some, some, some things here, uh, that I, to expand on some of the things that, that he spoke, uh, that I agree with.
The floor is yours for five minutes, ma'am.
All right, uh, no, five minutes is too long, I only require like maybe one and a half.
All right.
All right, sir, give me one more.
Nice.
How is it that the city can charge maintenance fees on bin scratches? That's like server balancing issue that.
Expand on.
You shouldn't apply like real life logic to.
Bill, all juries must contain at least one mountain lion.
Appreciate you guys.
Um, this, this bill essentially is a bill that, uh, says that the mountain lion should be named a mutt. And if you, your record weighs heavier than a feather, the judge will have to be a doctor judge and perform a cardiac procedure where your heart will be cut out and fed to a mutt. Then your body would be mummified to be later exhumed thousands of years later to be studied by gray aliens for science, should anything happen to the, uh, human race?
What?
Keep it together, Nancy.
Are you okay? Nancy?
I believe Nancy's having an anaphylactic reaction to something.
Is she having a stroke? Are you? Is there any other doctors but me here?
Yeah, um.
Were you?
The, uh, the. The, the adopt a hooker, adopt a hooker program, cause we need more feminist bills in the city to support sex workers of the city. And I'm pretty sure adopting a hooker would be the most progressive and feminist thing that you can do, so it would be mandatory for every citizen to adopt one hooker each. Um, uh, an alternative meta, method for, uh, execution where we employ thousands of people with diabetes to pee on the person being executed and.
Oh, my God.
Call it a golden shower.
Hey!
Let me finish.
I don't think I want you to finish.
It's an alternative method of execution where we employ thousands of people with diabetes to pee on the person being.
Larry, you okay with this?
All right, Nancy.
Being executed and we would wait up to twelve hours for the ants to arrive to eat them alive. I would call that a diet execution, um, coming after, you know, Crane's diet terrorism, so that would be the name of the bill. As far as the, uh, make it legal to have sex with your sister, but only if she's hot, this bill would be called when your family tree is just a trunk bill. Uh, and there's also Paul Gore's agricultural bill, uh, which, uh, state that, um, agriculture is the biggest culprit of deforestation in the Amazon. But if we start killing vegans, the biggest consumers of soy, we may be able to curb the environmental impact caused by them for eating soy and destroying the forests in South America. And one more feminist law would be, um, the bequeafment law for women, where if you queef, you get a mint.
All right, ma'am, your time is up, thank you kindly, please step back.
Why do we need a mint after queefing?
Ms. Cox, the world may never know. All right, moving on, thank you, Nancy, you may step back. All right, anyone else have any questions, general comments, concerns, let me see some hands. Okay, Ms. Edwards, I believe you were waiting, go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Rose Edwards and I'm a real sage in the city. Before I already addressing the key holder changes, or can I address that now?
Uh, you may go ahead with that now.
Perfect.
You son of a bitch. Okay, uh, so let's, uh, okay, so let's do this, we have multiple people that wanna speak about the key holder changes. I know there are several groups that have gotten together and sort of like put their heads together and come up with comments. So, um, anyone who is wanting to discuss or give their input on the key holder changes, uh, if you could step forward past the bar and line up next to Nancy, uh, we can call y'all up one at a time to speak on that subject, thank you.
Perfect, I just wanted to address it and bring forward the petition that Pillbot has created. It's a public petition that we've had passed around the city over the last couple of days, we have a hundred and forty eight signatures.
Thank you for the tier one, appreciate you guys.
Proposal of the changes to be reverted. I don't enjoy showing houses to people in the city, thinking that they're going to have a memory together to be able to live there and then their key just be removed.
Okay. I can understand that frustration. Give any, uh, further comment on the topic?
Oh, just wanted to let you know, I'm also putting proposal through with my company to allow for resales of your homes, possibly seventy-five percent will be returned to you instead of fifty.
Okay, uh, understood. Um, and what company is that? And what's the name of the real estate company if anybody wants to look it up?
Small Dick Real Estate.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, next up to talk about the, uh, key holder issue, go ahead, ma'am, when you're ready.
Yeah, I, I have a speech written about this, so I'm gonna give that.
Yep, go ahead, shout, make sure you're shouting, you need to shout, ma'am.
I don't.
Yeah, so, uh, I've been working with Pillbot and a bunch of other people talking about all this stuff. Pillbot and I have been coordinating and a bunch of other people, we've also come up with a proposal for the, uh, changes to the key holder laws instead of just repealing the new one. So I'm gonna give my speech here.
Okay, before you start your speech, I wanna make a clarification.
Yes.
This is not a law, this is an action when it comes to how things work in the city, okay?
I guess what I mean is I'm proposing a way to, uh, change the policy and not the law.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, perfect. Homeowners of Los Santos were given a rude awakening on Tuesday morning as they discovered their keys were placed overnight. The new set of keys we got allowed only the homeowner to access everything in the house and everything else, everyone else who lived in the house, um, basically just got a key to the front door and they can no longer get into their things. Hundreds of people in the city suddenly found themselves unable to access their own possessions, needing to wait for the legal owner of the home to be available to retrieve them. Small businesses who operated out of homes were also left in the lurch as employees no longer had the ability to get merchandise from their closets and refrigerators. I came here today to speak for everyone in the city who suddenly found themselves locked out of the basic functions of a home. Personally, I own my home with my fiance and we've owned this home for nearly five months. Uh, we put our blood, sweat and tears into this house, we paid off our mortgage together, decorated the house together.
Nova, thank you for the tier one.
You know, we go grocery shopping for food, we put it in our refrigerator, we leave notes. And with all these changes to our keys, uh, my fiance can no longer access anything in our house. We can't mutually buy groceries unless we leave them in his car.
Gifted tier one subs, thank you so much, ma'am.
For each other.
Nova seven one seven, thank you.
Sorry, hold on.
You son of a bitch.
All these little things we used to do in our house are just a memory because we can't, we can't.
Hell, yeah, man, thank you.
We can't use like basic functions of our house. And this is the same thing happening to lots of people I've spoken to around the city, they bought a house with their, you know, married partner, their friends. Nobody can, they can't interact with each other inside their home outside of just basically speaking to each other and getting things out of the fridge for them. And so what I'd like to propose to the city and a thing that a lot of people have talked about and discussed is that we allow people to actually co-own homes. Have it be an arrangement between the people who own the home and the judicial system, have judges sign off on co-ownership, have judges dissolve co-ownership. Uh, so that way there's not an issue with people giving someone a key and taking it away or things like that.
If, if this were to be put in, it would create a nightmare paradox. Because.
So my proposal would be that when two people are maybe more, uh, buy a house together, they would.
How would you deal with breakouts?
The judge would approve this co-ownership, they would split the asset fees and the bills and things like that.
Yeah, this is all mechanical development stuff.
Could only be dissolved by a judge, either with all parties who own the house agreeing to it.
There has to be an ultimate ownership for everything in the city.
Paying their bills, they lose access to that.
Unfortunately, this isn't a terrible idea, but I don't know if it's ever going to be.
Share homes with their family and their friends shouldn't be punished as if we're criminals just because we own a house together. When policy is changed like this to punish criminals and then it also affects the innocent as much or more, uh, maybe we should look for a better way to deal with the problem.
From chain rating?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, um, is there anyone else who wants to bring forth anything different that has not been talked about with the key holder issue? Before we start going into a discussion on the topics that have been raised, are there any unique points of view on the issue that have not been brought up yet? Okay, seeing none, um, so I'm gonna offer some insights into the evolution of the issue and talk about some of the, um, the challenges facing, you know, us moving forward. Um, the issue was raised initially to do with the fact that people were upset that, uh, someone having a key to their home, who maybe only uses it once or twice to go into the house and change clothes or sleep over once a month or something, um, means that then their home is subject to be raided if that person or individual, uh, is found, let's say with a large amount of drugs or is arrested, you know, uh, human trafficking or, you know, whatever, weapons trafficking, whatever it may be, right? Um, and so the issue here is that there is a legitimate concern on the one hand from the citizenry, that just someone having a key to a house which is accessible and viewed in the MDW, um, should not be grounds to have their home searched. Uh, the other side of that is, is that if you are going to, you know, give out keys to your home and the key list has been expanded to include four or five people now, uh, there is a, a questionable sort of paradigm by which, you know, are we kind of in fuck around and find out territory? Uh, is it prudent to give out keys to your home to people who may cause you to be raided by their activities? Um, so, and here's the, there's a whole other dynamic here that, um, goes into sort of the purpose and use of a home. Um, if people are buying houses, uh, and then sharing all the keys with all of their friends and they are bypassing, uh, storage lockers or warehouses or casino hotel rooms or anything else that could be used as sort of joint storage and are instead utilizing a house to do so, uh, does that inherently belie, you know, any normal purpose of a house and at that point, has it turned into something more akin to a storage unit with a front door, uh, that looks more like a welcome mat as opposed to an industrial garage area? Uh, in other jurisdictions, there have been problems with houses being used in this way and what it has come down to is people then implement like zoning laws and use restrictions and such like that. Um, there's even, you know, some jurisdictions that have laws that prevent four women from living in the same house under the auspices that it could be considered a brothel. So as a result, uh, there's a lot of complication when you start talking about those things. Now, in terms of the suggestions raised, uh, the idea of splitting of asset fees and all of that, I think you're gonna run into the same conversation I had earlier about marriage, which is if you wanted to set up a legally binding contract between you and someone else and you wanted to try to apply for joint ownership status, uh, that may be something that could be considered, but at the end of the day, you have to realize there will only be one owner of the home in the MDW. Just like in an employment situation, if you own a company and you would like to have a board of directors or co-owners, it is, uh, literally impossible for us legally to go ahead and allow you to have complete pure joint ownership outside of you creating a separate legal document that does so. Because, uh, there is always going to be within the MDW, one person who has the permissions within the system, that's just how it's going to be. And I suspect that based on the way that the assets and maintenance fees are handled within that system, that may be the same case for homeownership, asset fee splits, et cetera. So if those splits were to occur, while I like the idea of having, uh, legally binding dual ownership, I think that is accomplished through contracts between adults and, uh, it may not be something that is going to be a priority in terms of changing the architecture and infrastructure of how the MDW and asset and maintenance fees are calculated. So those are, uh, some limiting factors I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of and, and, uh, thinking of when they bring up their suggestions. In terms of the keys, I'm of a couple minds. Um, so on one hand, I understand the people's concern regarding if they just have a key to someone's house to be able to sleep there, wake up there in the morning, you know, that sort of thing, uh, that it could get the owner raided. On the other hand, um, I believe that, you know, when the key limit was increased, it was not foreseen that people were going to utilize houses as effectively dump sites for their criminal activities. Um, so I'm, I'm at the point where I think that we put in a solution, meaning the judiciary and the senate, instituted a solution that we believed, um, would solve the issue of sort of being implicated by just being a key holder. It has created some awareness, uh, regarding people that are cohabitating. Um, and that is something that we can discuss and figure out if there's a solution to. But I will tell you right now that, um, sometimes that whole this is why we can't have nice things comes into effect. And unfortunately, while there are many people who may have been cohabitating in a completely, uh, intended way and, you know, living together in their home and utilizing it for the purposes of it being a family home, there are many people that are utilizing, uh, these homes as stash houses for their gangs. And this is even happening with, uh, undeclared gangs, so just groups of citizens who may partake in illicit activities. And as such, um, it is getting to the point where the people living in homes together and cohabitating through some sort of long-term relationship may even be the minority at this point. So, uh, that's all the things we're trying to consider. Um, we will be discussing how we're gonna move forward. I take your, uh, comments very seriously, I know a lot of people are upset by the changes. Um, so we'll see what we can do and I'll bring your feedback to the senate and elsewhere, okay? That's, uh, that's about where I'm at, is there any follow-up comments, question based on what I've said about the issue? Anything that anyone would like to raise as a result of the comments that have been made so far? If you could raise your hands, please, if you have anything. All right, sir, in the, uh, the cutoff vest there.
Hello, uh, yeah, so just really the only other thing that I could think of that, uh, the lady before me spoke, uh, that she didn't mention was, uh, you know, loss of funds for potential small businesses.
No, Mr. Anderson.
My roommate works at the farmer's market.
Brought it to the forefront, but it was already a problem.
Uh, business in the stash of our house.
The encouragement was supposed to be towards warehouses.
Uh, we are around at pretty opposite times of the day and it's, it's, it's pretty tough. Um, I actually bought a van just so he could access his farmer's market equipment. And, uh, you know, he gets reimbursed for everything that he purchases for the, uh, for the marketplace. So i- in a way, the, the business itself is taking a hit, you know? And that, that's really all I have to say.
So my understanding that you bought a house for your business as opposed to like an office space?
No, no, um, we, my roommate and I split the house, uh, but he works up at the marketplace, the farmer's market in Polito. And.
Okay.
And so, you know, he, he spends money on products, um, for the farmer's market and, you know, things don't sell all the time, you know, he takes stuff back. But, uh, he gets reimbursed by the company and when he's not able to access the goods from the farmer's market or for the farmer's market, I'm sorry. Um, you know, those things end up kind of rotting away and, and going bad, uh, in, you know, causing a loss of.
The Cerberus offices have storage.
While it may be small, you know, it can add up and it could just be a little bit of an inconvenience for.
Sure. So I, I don't mean to cut you off, but I do wanna make sure that everyone is aware, um, that the Cerberus offices do offer, um, a stash base for legally registered businesses. So if there is a legally registered business in the state that is renting an office space there, the employees can be given access and they can use that for the purposes of the business. Now, I would suggest quite clearly and obviously that no one should use this as a workaround for the idea of using a warehouse or a storage locker or a hotel room or whatnot. Um, but if it is legitimately for the purpose of a business, that would be my suggestion and I believe that everyone here should be incredibly thankful that they have access to such a very nice resource for legally registered businesses. Because the, uh, offices are very affordable, um, they do have good storage and, uh, they are. and, uh, they are easily accessible in a good location in the city. So that would be my comment there.
Okay, I actually didn't know about that. Thank you, sir.
Yes, I would, I would suggest anyone who has concerns about utilizing a house for purposes other than cohabitation should look towards those offices, um, if it is a legal registered business. Okay, Ms. Edwards, go ahead. Yes, uh, there is Ms. Red Johnson who is, uh, part of that team. Hello, Rose, go ahead.
I would like to go back to, uh, what you said, if there was any comments regarding your, um, discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I would like to request a line of communication next time anything's changing within the keys of the city. Um, the day it happened, we probably had twenty-five to thirty complaint calls within the Realtors. And I had no idea of why or what even happened because there was nobody who told the real estate company.
I'm gonna be honest, uh, I wasn't even communicated, I'm the mayor, so.
I'm not trying to say that I deserve that, I'm just asking for a line of communication to everyone, not just myself.
In the future, uh, when those changes are made, I will request that I am given uh, at least immediate notice, if not advanced notice, so that I can issue an announcement, uh, through the DOJ announcements. Unfortunately, at this time, the way that the discussion happened with the result of that issue, it had been boiling over for a period of several weeks. Uh, there was about a three or four hour conversation held, uh, with the PD High Command as well as, uh, several citizens that had raised concerns, um, via myself as an outlet for their concerns to PD. You can also thank a lot of the lawyers in town for hounding me and bringing it to my attention as an issue. Um, and so we have, uh, we had a change that went pushed through the architecture of the system in the MDW. Um, and with the digital key access on your phones, that was not something that was, uh, properly documented and, uh, discussed. And so I will take responsibility for that because while I was part of the discussion that created the change, I was not aware of the immediacy or the impending implementation. Uh, I should have been more careful to understand if that was what was going to occur and I should have communicated that better. So I will take responsibility for that this time and I will endeavor in the future to communicate those to give people heads up.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, next. Yep, go ahead.
Hi there, uh, am I yelling? There we go, now I'm yelling. Uh, I have just a rather simple suggestion. Uh, my friend Kylie and I bought a house together in Mirror Park. We're both government employees. She works dispatch, I work EMS. Um, my first thought when this change came through was why not kind of find a middle ground where, so it was okay to have access to storage when you were listed on the MDW? Now that we're not listed on the MDW for the sake of privacy, say you just wanna change your clothes there, just wanna wake up there.
On the docket.
Uh, why not have a tier set of keys where, you know, you know you will be listed on the MDW, therefore opening yourself up to raids, but you have storage level access in your home? If you have that level of key, you can do the, the first level for just waking up and just changing your clothes and it's not listed. Second level, which is, you know, slightly under the, the homeowner themselves, you just, you know, can't unilaterally sell it or whatever. Uh, and then the homeowner key, which would be full permission.
I think that's a great idea. I will bring that forward to the senate and the people that work on the backend of the MDW and the key system. Uh, I cannot promise anything. I cannot even give an ETA of when you would get a response. Uh, but I think it's an idea worth bringing forward that would be a good middle ground and I've already been kicking around that in my own head. So I appreciate that, ma'am. And I will endeavor to bring that forward.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we'll go with the woman in the white short-sleeved shirt. Then we'll get Ms. Kira Cruz and then we'll get Ms. Lichenberg.
All right, hi. I just wanna back up what my girl was saying over there. I don't know you, but great idea.
The, the dirt is, the air is a little thick in here.
Oh. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, you just, you got some kiki going on, that's all. I didn't recognize you. Okay.
Oh, sorry. Okay, um, uh, yeah, I just want to add my two cents in that it straight up doesn't make sense to allow both, um, five, you know, five keys to a house and yet no one has stash, stash access. Um, I agree with the tiered key system, uh, you know, giving storage access to maybe certain people. Um, but I also would like to say that I am someone who would not mind going back to the old system of two keys per resident. I don't mind that personally. Whether the key holder is, um, listed on the MDW or not, um, I also don't mind. But I, I, I do wanna reiterate, it just, it straight up does not make sense to allow five keys, but no one has stash access. So I think, um, the possible compromise of allowing certain people um, stash access for that, uh, would make the most sense.
Yes, uh, so I, I do agree with you Penny, um, in the sense that there is a sort of juxtaposition between the number of keys and the level of access. Um, and I think what everyone here needs to understand is, um, and I'm gonna say this in the best phrasing I can. It i- it is, uh, something to be encouraged that if every, if people would like to, uh, wake up and go to sleep at the same house and be able to change their clothes theirs together as a group of friends that might own a property together, uh, that is something to be encouraged. Um, I'm not so sure that we are doing anyone any favors by encouraging people to purchase homes together for the sake of utilizing a stash and I'll leave it at that. Um, I do agree with you that there is some middle ground that can be discussed regarding maybe two keys, uh, maximum in terms of stash access and maybe then the other three could be, you know, closet keys, we would call them, or, you know, uh, bed keys or whatever you wanna say. Um, and I agree that a middle ground can be reached. Unfortunately, the actions of some people in terms of abusing, um, the expanded key system led to a need for a change. So, uh, we are at a stopgap point and we will move forward from there.
For sure. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, I believe I said, uh, mhm, I said Ms. Kira Cruz and then Ms. Lichenberg.
All right, just, uh, follow up to, uh, one of the person's suggestions. Um, I don't know if like, maybe we could do like, uh, uh, like kind of like the businesses, where they can give, uh, stash access.
What's the harm of people using houses as stashes?
Like, you know, have a tier system that you just suggested, uh, where only like one or two people can have, uh, stash access.
Need to encourage people to use warehouses and to spend money on things like hotel rooms and storage lockers.
Yes, that's, uh, I just wanna put forward, y'all.
Okay, yeah, we can take that as part of the, uh, suggestions we bring forward for discussion.
Uh, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Kira Cruz, Ms. Lichenberg. Uh, so once, once Ms. Lichenberg has her, her say on this, uh, I'm gonna just ask that you consider if you wanting to speak on this subject, has what I've said already been generally discussed? Um, if you even come close to the answer, yes, in your head, consider bringing it up separately with me privately because we're kind of, uh, extending one issue a little long here. Go ahead, Ms. Lichenberg.
Agreed. Um, all right, so my big issue with the key stash issue is that I feel like this is kind of the, you're, you're punishing regular folks for the activities of criminals in this case. Like you're trying to deter criminal activity by also then punishing all the rest of us who aren't doing it. Listen, I am, I, I'm married to someone. We have a legal contract and he, we have a house together. No, we have a legal contract, actual legal contract.
I wrote it.
Oh, Mazzatoff.
Yeah, thank you. And he can't use, you know, he can't use our trunk at all and I've had to move all his stuff elsewhere. It's like, we're not even married anymore. And like at this point, you're deterring criminal activity by punishing civilians. And that I don't think is the right method to go about it.
Well, they're still sorry, but interior decorator smoked crack and robbed the bank, so now you all can't have, uh,
All right, all right, all right, all right, all right. Uh, Ms. Lichenberg, I take your point. Um, I will refer to my previous comment that unfortunately it reached a fever pitch where the people buying houses en masse and using them, well, regular people were in the minority, so it is what it is. Um, okay, so.
You should always side with the innocent, not with the guilty.
Yes, I agree, which is why we're making modifications. Uh, okay, gentlemen, with the red tie, uh, if you have a comment about the key holder system, let's do it afterwards. If you have a general comment, please come up to the podium.
Good day, your holiness. My name is Mortis Shizdemu and I am the head of the Environmental Visionary Institute of Los Santos. I come to you with a proposal. I am certain you've seen the infestation of what you would call locals on the roads. Many of us have had many issues with them in front of our vehicles, in our way, being aggressive. I would like to propose that we have one period each month where we cull the local population.
If you can split up the concentration of your assets, controlling a warehouse doesn't mean as much.
I would like a purge.
All right, all right, stop, stop. Uh, Mr. Dimu, as much as I appreciate your commentary, I am well aware because I oversaw the plea deal that you signed a plea agreement for murdering three hundred of these locals. Uh, so I will not be authorizing a purge. Uh, let's not go down that road again. Thank you. What you did before was illegal and horrible.
I have a real suggestion that I've been trying to get pushed for years, actually.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
All right.
Oh no, it's a Wrangler again.
Treat red lights as stop signs for God's sakes. Yes. I think people would actually be more inclined to follow the fucking traffic laws if we treated red lights as stop signs. Have you ever tried to set at one? It's terrible.
Wouldn't that stop like half of your arrests?
Yeah, I was about to say that.
That's fine, because guess what? I, me as a police officer, I don't wanna follow the fucking, uh, laws.
That's my captain.
Well, he didn't kill three hundred guys. He pled guilty to killing three hundred.
And I really think that people actually might drive like, normal fucking people.
Said in RP, I killed three hundred locals.
Three fucking minutes every five seconds.
Hey, legalize murder at the towers, yo.
No.
Thank you. I've been pushing for this for years. Please.
I will bring it forth. Uh, are there any other questions, comments, concerns, general notes?
Uh, I had a question.
Yes, Penny.
So, uh, so this is, uh, referring back to the keys again. You were, you mentioned something about oh, po- you know, being in a, in a stage of fuck around and find out. Can you elaborate on that?
Well, uh, if people are going to gain key holder access that gives them storage access, uh, and that is going to be advocated for, then it is going to be made very plain and clear, probably through very simple legislation that states that if you have key holder access to a person's house and you are raided and a raid warrant is going to be issued for all of quote unquote, your properties, uh, then the, that key holder stash access will likely extend to those properties as well. Um, that is the fuck around and find out. If you're going to give people access to your home and access to the stash and give them one of these quote unquote, priority keys, then it is very likely that you should not be surprised if your home gets raided.
Right, so then my, then my question is what, uh, what was what was so wrong with that, that it got to a point where stash access was then removed from everybody else?
I got about, uh, fifty different complaints in about a three-day period. From attorneys, from general citizens, from criminals, non-criminals. Uh, and it caused an issue to be raised that was discussed with multiple stakeholders such as the PD, the judiciary, the senate, and this was the response that was given.
Okay, I think, um, uh, my comment on that then would be, I think, going back to the need for communication, because I, I, if I recall correctly, the, um, the change of being able to give everybody, um, uh, five keys to a house plus the change of having them show up as secondary key holders in the MDW were all very sudden with no communication to anybody.
As I said, I will take responsibility for that. It is not my job. I'm not the one making the changes, but if I'm gonna have these discussions and be the conduit or the voice for them, well, then I need to take responsibility. So I will take that. I will make sure that I will, uh, endeavor to, at least on my end, request, uh, firmly some sort of communication to me as things happen. I can't always guarantee that it will occur, but if it does not, I will take responsibility even if I can't do anything about it.
All right, thank you.
All right. Uh, sir, in the, uh, was that a maroon tie?
Can I say something, Crane, real quick?
Uh, you can. Let's go after this gentleman who raises his hand.
Hey, maroon five is washed, yo.
Uh, hello, your honor. Uh, thank you for letting me speak at this, uh, town hall. Uh, my name is DJ Leo. I'm an employee of Burger Shot, a business owner who hosts weekly trivia at Tequila Law. This is week thirteen. And of course, a taxpayer of the great state of Los Santos. Uh, I've filed several police reports as my obligated duty to help protect my great community. Uh, under the most recent police filing, the officer verbally abused me and then put me in a position where I don't feel safe in my own city. The incident question was where a police officer took my firearm, explained to me it was used in a crime and told me to contact Chief Bass or Sheriff Pred to obtain my weapon back. When I reported this to the police, I was laughed at and then ver- verbally abused by the officer yelling at me and then calling me.
Hold on, this is not an open complaint forum for, uh, your interactions with the police. There is an IA department on top of that, sir. I got this sheriff, thank you. Um, so, sir, uh, this is not an open complaint forum for police for individual matters. If you have an individualized targeted complaint about how you were treated and you believe it was wrong, the first thing you should do is get an attorney, such as one of the ones over to my right. Uh, the second thing you should do is you should speak with that attorney about your options. Then use them as your mouthpiece to go talk to IA or anyone else.
Okay, thank you, your honor.
That would be the perspective I would give you. Thank you. Okay, yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, um, as Crane mentioned earlier, you can get an office of Cerberus for, um, storage and also paying less, uh, in the process of getting fifteen new units added to the city. Hopefully that will alleviate some of the problems with, um, businesses and whatnot needing stash access.
Also, I would highly encourage everyone as a follow-up to that to, uh, if you are interested in warehouses and your complaint is that they are always, uh, taken already, uh, I would suggest being a little more, uh, thorough with your review of what is available because I have seized, uh, a number of warehouses and houses personally, some as recently as a day and a half ago. So just cuz you think everything is taken, doesn't mean it is.
Uh, can I also, uh, add something real quick?
Hey, what's up, Snow? Yo, it's a crazy fucking feeling to see us, Snow, in my Twitch chat. I remember sitting in Snow's Twitch chat at work.
And do not give me a business proposal.
Fucking two years ago, Jesus Christ, that's weird. What's up, buddy? Good to see you. It's a shame that I'm, I'm NA cuz I never get to see you. You guys don't know that, uh, Snow, um, actually was one of the first PD officers who like encouraged me to try to get a bar because he said that, um, he said that I should be the one running a ca- running a case and Grizz should be the paralegal. But yeah, Snow's, uh, Snow's great. I actually was talking about you the other day as an example of the chat. All right, uh, Sheriff Pred has hand up.
Uh, no, I didn't have my hand up. I was just, um, I mean, eh, fuck it, I can say something.
Um, but I actually was using you as an example the other day, Snow, to chat about how you can play um, a strong character that can be like a dickhead at times.
That's a different topic.
Um, while making it a character. And you don't just have to hold hands with everyone to like be a good RP'er.
I don't give a fuck about this fucking mouth.
Is try to have enough of an edge and have enough of like, uh, you know.
Oh my god.
Um, conversation with people where I like take a hard stand.
Get some, get some.
At times, yeah, okay.
What I'd like to possibly propose here is.
Yeah, you can be a hard ass and still be in character.
Back to like the traffic stuff, I think it's a serious, I think it, I think it is kind of an issue. Um, I kinda would like to see a charge like reckless driving and running red lights and stuff like that maybe be increased. So that all these people can stop doing it. Fuck all of you. I fucking hate you. I fucking hate you. You in the robe, fuck you. Hey, shut up, pussy.
Uh, so I will say this, Sheriff, uh, in resp- okay. Enough, 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 enough dick measuring, look.
All right, enough.
Uh, okay, guys, so I will say this. There is an ongoing effort, uh, from Senator Davis in conjunction with the judiciary and other people, uh, when it comes to the penal code, where Senator Davis has a mind to wholesale increase the times and fines of, of the crimes, mostly focusing on the fines by about one point five to two X across the board. Um, the state of the economy is such that, uh, well, gosh, it is not uncommon for me as a judge to check someone's bank account during a bail hearing gosh, it is not uncommon for me as a judge to check someone's bank account during a bail hearing and find out that someone who has recently been convicted of drug and weapons trafficking and murdering cops every day for a month straight still is able to have around one point five million dollars liquid. So as a result, uh, there is a concern that the income rate as compared to the money being spent in this city is a little out of control. Uh, so the state may begin instituting higher times and fines depending on how things are going. Uh, so that is being considered.
Uh, perfect. Also, I've heard rumors that the senators are Kryptonians. Can we perhaps legalize kryptonite for no, for no real, for no reason?
Well, Sheriff, uh, you might wanna talk to Fingle, Dan, cuz the last time I let him in my car, he put a bar of uranium in the glove box. Uh, so if you'd like to gain access to things of that nature, he'd probably be a good bet. I'm aware, but it's in the same damn category, you ugly Japanese appropriating asshole. Alright, anyone else?
I will send him to jail right now, Justice Crane, alright?
No, that's fine. He's harmless.
Yeah, he is.
Oh, god, Craig, what'd they do to you?
Oh, hey, look, it's Craig. I have a warrant, Munson.
Was that still active?
It is. Wrangler's the one who wrote it for throwing a grenade at him.
Jesus Christ, it is still active.
That's true.
Alright, anyone else? General questions, Mr. Pole?
Hey, Tony, grab the gun, yo.
Not sure if I can ID him.
What are you looking at? Pigment ID over there, Bloom?
No, it, uh, Craig looks really weird for.
I know, that's what I said. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, so my question, and I guess this would be a Norman question, is, uh, will diet terrorism be used as like, uh, totality charge or will it be by like, let's say I drive by and blow up a car with like two cops in it? Will it be two diets or just one?
Rest assured, I will use the law.
I can answer that with Norman. Our discussion at the meeting was that it's all inclusive. So if you use a class two to achieve your diet terrorism, it will be like robbery of a financial institution. So, um, it will be where everything is involved. You will get one charge. It will be an easy process. AKA, if you wanna go around and tell police to go forty-two pussy and throw a grenade at them, you will get diet terrorism. That's just, it's gonna be very simple.
Hey, did we include drugs in that or is that something separate still?
We will discuss the idea of what's included or not. I would prefer it to be everything, but obviously if you go do your diet terrorism with a meth table on you, then maybe you're a dumbass of a higher order that needs a little more punishment, so we will talk about that.
Alright, thank you.
He got away.
Oh, no. Anyway, um, okay, anybody else? General comments, questions, concerns, anything? Okay, we'll go with, uh, Lonnie first. Thank you, dude. Snow, that, that whole thing was hilarious. It was such good RP too cuz I got chewed out by Grizz in the car afterwards and he tried to spin it onto like me being dumb and me failing the negotiation shit. Uh, as of now, there are no plans to, uh, relinquish you from your delinquent status. Uh, we may talk about it in the future like some sort of financial expungement, which, you know, is obviously just bankruptcy, but I am very, uh, averse to implementing these mechanical processes of law into this city that exists elsewhere because, uh, good god, you literally don't understand the, like Pandora's box you are opening by trying to get things like wills and marriages and bankruptcies, uh, implemented here.
I'm not asking for any of that. I just want.
Yeah, you just wanna get forgiven for your debt. I understand.
Yeah, I mean, cuz we got like loans and shit, yo. We all, we got credit scores and shit, just like never let me take out a loan or something. I don't know.
It is a possibility we can talk about.
Alright, thanks, Alan.
I'll add it to the list. Alright, uh, yes, ma'am, with the, uh, fire red hair and the blue top. Is that, uh, Miss Ableton? Okay, hello, Miss Ableton, come forward. Any questions, erasing or boosting, uh? No, but good god, Snow, after playing cop, do I have a more of an appreciation for how fucking crazy, uh, D-Sync is on the server?
You know, not everybody that shoots cops. Not everyone shoots cops every day. So, like, the top, like, doubling the fines for the top one percent who, like, you son of a bitch. Do all of that.
Zapcat and could've got a Falcon. Thank you for the tier one and the prime respectively.
Like, if you're not a habitual offender.
If you are wantonly killing cops without any kind of underlying felonious, uh, situation, uh, then you are.
Killing cops. It could be traffic tickets or whatever, just like the consideration of a tiered system.
For what?
Based off your recent criminal activity. If you have, like, I don't know, five offenses in the MDW in the past week, your tier goes up or something like that.
Uh, I think that, uh, you're basically just talking about police discretion and it's not really a good idea to legislate discretion because then it's not discretion at all. Um, I think that there is something to be said for the idea of endearing yourself to the people you have to interact with on the other side of the wall. And if, uh, you know, you endeavor to be considered as a lower tier person who does not deserve super harsh punishment, well, I think the best way you can demonstrate that is by putting your best foot forward with your interactions with police. And if they choose to still be hard asses, then well, uh, sometimes you get held accountable based on what you do, not based on how you do it.
Yeah, but you're talking about doubling fines for everybody in the whole city.
Correct. That has nothing to do, no, 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 that is not based on the actions of the one percent.
But it is because you said, it's, because you said people still have one point five million dollars. And I would beg, I would argue that the people that have one point five million dollars are maybe ten, ten people, twenty people, uh.
So, my, my point is this, um, when I have random citizens, uh, shocked that I only have sixty thousand dollars in my bank account, that tells me, um, that the economy, uh, is at a stage now where people's access to money is much greater than it was before. While I understand that there may be some sort of, uh, scaling to these adjustments of times and fines, this is also an ongoing process. I'm mostly talking about, um, the discussions, the last time we had them mostly centered around violent, uh, felonies or violent actions. Um, things like, uh, you know, a speeding crime might, uh, not receive the same escalation. But I think overall to account, account for sort of, uh, for lack of a better term, inflation, uh, we, they all might be increased. They may not be increased the same rate.
Yeah, I just think it's kind of fucked up to, to, to double fines with only because the rich still have money, that's all. With not everyone is rich and you just wanna punish the poor because of the rich.
I think you're, uh, mischaracterizing that, but understood. Anyone else? General comments, questions, concerns? Uh, loophole, I believe, if you have anything else?
Oh, no, it was just the, uh, diet charge.
Okay, uh, yes, sir, with the, uh, checkered pants.
Am I, am I audible?
You're good.
Yes, sir.
You are, hello, Shadow.
Hey, so, uh, yeah, my name's Shadow, business owner in the city, taxpaying citizen. Uh, recently I was, uh, held at gunpoint by a man with a assault rifle, blah, 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 carjacked. And I went to go retrieve my vehicle and the police, uh, told me I could not retrieve it and that it'd be impounded and striked. Um, and then I'd have to deal with it in a civil manner and sue the man who held me at gunpoint with an assault rifle, as if that's a smart plan of action. Anyways, I had to go full Karen on them until I finally got released. And my issue is, obviously, as a, as a, as a taxpaying citizen with no record, no link to any of this, I'm punished by a, by a simple black and white law that basically states that because my car was accused of a crime, it should be struck.
And I have to pay for the impound. Concerns you have to understand. I'll go over this later. Once this is done being spoken about. Strike system is not broken.
Criminal activity, of course, has to punish us again. Um, but I think that's just lazy police work, in my opinion. I think cops should have to prove that I have some sort of link to who stole my car. Um, I, I don't feel like that system is, is, is good at all in its current state. So, I'd hope there'd be some sort of rework of that system so that I don't have to worry about going through that again when I'm the victim and then even more of a victim.
Okay.
That's all.
Uh, so my response to that would be the strike system is a result of a past, uh, where every single person, uh, who committed a crime ever would do so in a tuner car or an A-plus or S-class car. They would do so, uh, by just driving their friend's car instead of driving theirs or by getting keys from someone. Uh, and then they would go ahead and just, the person would three-one-one, my car was stolen. And then they would commit the crime in it. And as such, there was literally no deterrent to using personal vehicles in crimes because as you suggested, uh, the police would need to prove that the person had, uh, consent to use the vehicle from the owner in order to strike them and that was impossible because the owner had reported it stolen. Uh, so as a result, there was a system implemented whereby the default was that it was one strike if the owner was not present, if it was used in the commission of one of the, uh, underlying enumerated crimes. Now, I will tell you that the idea of having to sue them in civil court is incorrect. I myself have probably processed, uh, upwards of fifty different instances of people having their cars stolen, that person speaking with the officer who did the striking of the vehicle or who was the primary person on the incident. That citizen provides the officer with proof, uh, or, you know, an argument that they don't know the person or that they went to MRPD and filed the report that their car was stolen. And if those things are done and the officer is convinced, the officer then contacts the DOJ or I contact the officer once the citizen comes to me. If I get the officer's affirmative consent to remove the strike, then I do so. Uh, judges have the ability to do that, but we rely on the officer's consent because otherwise we'd just be taking someone's word for it.
Understood, but I was referencing it more of also it's like the impound fees, right? I found my, I mean, my.
I have refunded impound fees before, uh, throughout multiple of those instances.
Okay.
But you need to work with the officer who put the strike on there. You need to explain the situation to them calmly and you need to get them on their side because it is their discretion to push the strike or not. If they are not on your side and they don't believe you, then unfortunately, the only way to mediate that situation is through a court filing. Because otherwise, I'm just taking one person's word for it or the other side's word for it and there's no way for me to know if what I'm doing is fair or accurate.
Yeah, I understand. I, I think the police that I dealt with didn't wanna hear that. They didn't, they didn't care about me being the victim.
Well, then I would suggest you, uh, reach out to me or reach out to another judge. Describe the scenario. The judge can then look into the incident report because the incident report should be tied into the impound reason. And then once we look at the incident report, we can then ask the officers involved if they, uh, are comfortable removing the strike or not and why. So if you would like a mediator, you can do that. Additionally, if you, uh, don't see a judge around, talk to an attorney, get them to reach out to a judge on your behalf because some of them may have better access to us off hours.
Yeah, I, I understand this and I'm glad that there's a system for that. It's just, once again, I'm just, it's just frustrating. Um, once again, being, being punished because of the action of what criminals are doing. I, I think it's a little bit weird.
It, it went far beyond criminals. This was literally any person involved in driving too fast, whatever. It would just be, well, not my car, it's my friend's car, can't strike it. Uh, and that's untenable. So as a result, uh, the system is in black and white for anyone. So they know if they lend their car out, there are risks of getting a strike, even if it's, you know, proven stolen or not. Uh, but again, we can all work in a middle ground with each other and, uh, speak on a human level. If the police don't wanna work with you on it, uh, then go through the attorney route, talk to a judge. That is unfortunately the best we can do. But I will tell you that even with notorious criminals in this city, there are times when cars get stolen. I get that. And the officers have always been willing to work with me on it. So, um, perhaps don't try to resolve it in the immediacy of the situation. Oftentimes, people are dealing with many things. They're stressed out. Um, in fact, sometimes officers are under siege, so they may not be, you know, in the best state of mind to go over sort of what is otherwise more of a process issue. Uh, so I would suggest reaching out to a third party if the discussion with the officers does not bear fruit.
Yeah, you're the only reason I was actually able to even get some, some results to the situation cuz they originally just didn't give a shit until I said I talked to Crane and they're like, oh, we'll get a cop to talk to you then. I'm like, oh, that's great. So anyways, but yeah, that's all. That's all. I'll leave it.
I would suggest like any other force, whether it is the PD, whether it's a gang, whether it's the tax agency, whether it's the mayor's office, whether it's the DOJ. There are often times where just going directly to the person that you're at odds with in that situation may not, you know, be the best avenue. I would suggest, uh, always trying to get someone to advocate on your behalf, whether that's an attorney, judge, deputy mayor, whatever it may be.
Alright.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else? General questions, comments, concerns before we wrap up here?
James, do you want me to save the information that we just found?
Um, I mean, I can save it.
Okay, James got some information about the maintenance fees for people.
Yeah, so, uh, maintenance fees are as follows. For your first S-class, it's thirty thousand dollars. For your first A-class, it's ten thousand dollars. For your first B-class, it's two thousand five hundred. For your first C-class, it's one thousand dollars. For your first D-class, it's five hundred dollars. For your set first M-class, it's five thousand dollars. For every subsequent vehicle in, um, in that class, the second vehicle will, will be doubled the, um, maintenance fee. So for example, for an S-class, the second S-class will be sixty K. And including the first S-class, that means you'd be paying ninety thousand dollars every two weeks.
Yeah, I am blur. Um, so I'll just tell you right now. There was an announcement recently made to PD.
Will be, um, posting that on.
That there will be, um, out of character reviews of in-character actions that will result in punishment and or firings if deemed necessary. So, anyone who says that consequences don't happen.
And if you are holding any, um.
Needs to stop that narrative right now.
Illegal vehicles, they will also be, um, taxed as well, but I, I wouldn't know.
There's also a ton of in-character actions that take place between like the DOJ and the PD, for example. Just on one example.
Um, same with, uh, um, same with like if a third vehicle, it gets doubled again. So like your third S-class would be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, so you end up paying.
Could've got a Falcon, nerdy trolls.
Every two weeks for an S-class, for, for free S-classes. Believe the system is in place to stop you holding vehicles.
Alright, uh, thank you for the information, Mr. Arsenal. Uh, I believe unless I see any other pressing comments, questions, concerns, we're gonna wrap up this town hall. Thank you all for being here. If you'd like to speak to, uh, anyone up here from the mayor's office or the DOJ, uh, feel free to approach now and we can have, uh, side conversations. Thank you. I'm just sit here and have people.